Thank you for the time that we're here together, that we may serve the city and the citizens of... Bless our time, we ask this favor in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Next item is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
First and second, I do have a request for addition under new business, I believe would be 8D. Discuss and take action on new employee health plan. Would there be any other additions or deletions this evening? Any from staff? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carried. Citizens comments, this evening we have Ms. Henrietta Hall. Welcome. Please approach the podium. You have three minutes to deliver your questions or concerns.
My name is Henrietta Hall, citizen of Fairview, business owner, and I want to thank all of you for what you do, because I know y'all get beat up enough. So I just want to say, I know it's a hard job, and we do appreciate you, even though we don't always agree. I know that all of you probably know this, but I had posed some questions to the people who were running for the judge position, to Patty and to Stuart, and I appreciate so much you all answering those questions so quickly, I really do. And I know that the citizens of Fairview appreciate it, and I'm sure probably more questions will come. I also want to thank the three gentlemen who are running for the Board of Commissioners seat, and that's Jeff Mangram, and Shannon Crutcher, and Mr. Walker, Fred Walk... Frank Walker, sorry. And just the fact that there are so many who are willing to step forward into these positions, I really thank you for that. And I pray that everybody will be kind to each other, and remember the term that the high school uses, be nice, because there's no reason not to be, none at all. And I just really appreciate all of you, and I know it's a hard job, what you have to do. And most of the citizens go by their daily lives, just like I used to do, go to work, come home, feed my family, take care of my family, and not think about what you all are doing up here. And after watching you for almost an entire year, almost every week, I appreciate you, more than you know. And I do admire you all. You put up with a lot of stuff from us, for those of us who speak our mind. And I hope you take all our comments and questions just as that, that they're questions, because we just want to know. And some people are just beginning to learn how this works, and they might have more questions that might seem silly to you, but I appreciate it if you would be patient with them and just answer them, and not think there's some kind of agenda, because there's not. We just want to know who we're voting for, and I appreciate you for doing it, I really do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item is awards and recognitions. Would there be any from the board this evening?
No ma'am, not from me.
Any from staff?
No ma'am.
I would like to recognize the city and the amazing time at Nature Fest. Everyone did a fantastic job. I think the community was a shining light, and I'm very grateful to everyone who put their hand to the plow, and really showed out for the 30th anniversary for the Nature Fest. I'm sorry that I personally thanked John, but sorry that the chamber's not here, they did an amazing job. And I think everybody deserves, you know, a round of applause, because that was one of the greatest we've had. Activities and events and opportunities is what Fairview is getting greater by the day for. So thanks to everyone. Item number five, public announcements. Would there be any this evening?
Mayor, just a reminder of the emission testing Monday and Tuesday of each week, from 7:30 until noon. Thank you ma'am.
Are there any other activities or anything happening in September, October?
Is October the 4th, is that the fun day in the park?
Yes.
Fun day in the park. October 4th, Bowie Nature Park.
I think it's from 10 to 4.
Great. Anything else?
Just a reminder of our economic meeting at Camp Merrimont on October 1, from 11 till 2 PM. We have a lot of guests, and as y'all well know, y'all are invited too, as well as the Planning Commission. This is also very instrumental for y'all to hear all of their reports. We actually met today with Jeremiah Pyron, Jessica Bowe, the actual civil engineer for TVA. We were touring some of the locations that we're projecting in the future. But I think it's going to be a great day there for the city of Fairview, and a learning process for all of us.
Super, thank you.
And I just have one announcement. The high school football game, they're doing the run-through for all the elementary kids at 7, where they get to run through, so just as a public announcement, if you have an elementary child or you want to just come and see the jacket excitement and pride, then come out to the football game.
Great, thank you. Next is item six, approval of the minutes.
Move to approve.
We have the approval of the minutes from the September 2nd, 2014 Board of Commissioners Grant Workshop. We have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? 6B is approval of the minutes of the September 4th, 2014 public hearing.
Move to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Item 6C is approval of the minutes of the September 4th, 2014 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Move to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you, sounds like a robot. 7A in O Business, discuss and/or take action on Bill 2014-23.
Bill number 2014-23 is an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee located at 716 Highway 96 North, owned by Big Little Investments LLC. As shown on the City of Fairview Geological Listen of Assessment Roll Map 22 Parcel 150, from residential RS40 to commercial general CG, 2.34 acres. Move for approval.
We have first and second. Mr. Cantrell, did you have something to share on that subject?
No ma'am, it's a routine zoning change. Items A and B, A is the zoning change ordinance, B is the resolution set of public hearing as required by the state statute. As I said, it's routine zone change, no problem with it, just the two items that the board directed me to help prepare for this meeting.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
Excuse me, do they have a representative here?
He is here.
Okay.
Yes.
Hello sir, welcome. How's well? 7B, discuss and/or take action on Resolution 14-16.
It's a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on the changing of zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee located at 716 Highway 96 North, owned by Big Little Investments LLC. As shown on the City of Fairview Geological Listen of Assessment Roll Map 22 Parcel 150, from RS40 to CG, 2.34 acres. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Item 7C, discuss and/or take action on Resolution 14-15.
It's a resolution authorizing the cost of participating in the state of Tennessee transportation improvement resurfacing grant, pin number 115693, project number 94 LPM F3D36. Move for approval.
Second.
First and second, discussion?
Mayor, if I might, that is the resolution that authorizes the expenditures to participate in the Tennessee Transportation Improvement Grant Program. The resolution is basically, contains those items that the state requires that the city agree to or pass a resolution before you can... before the city can participate in the grant.
How would this reflect in the participation in the grant on that Friday that we requested to move forward? How would that reflect in this being post that?
This has to be passed, the... what you had, you talking about in the workshop?
Well, no, the Friday before the workshop, they had committed to the grant to move forward with the state.
Oh, well, it would just be, that couldn't formally go forward until they get this resolution. They were doing some preliminary stuff, and actually, they were doing that based upon assuming that we were going to pass this.
Okay, so that meeting Friday, tell me what happened there.
That meeting? Yeah, we met with representatives from the Department of Transportation, and we talked about this grant. And as you recall, there was a September 30th deadline for the funds to be obligated. So we asked them to go ahead and process obligating all the funds for this grant, so that we wouldn't miss the deadline. We're expecting now, any day, to get approval from the Federal Highway Administration, and then notice from the Department of Transportation telling us that the funds have been obligated, and we can... and a notice to proceed with construction. We were trying to keep everything moving in the process, so we wouldn't be pressured on the September 30th deadline.
Okay, so how does... does that reflect in any way on dates? I mean, if the resolution was so that could be done?
Yeah, that's fine.
No, it doesn't have to have, other than the date that you pass it. What it deals with is basically committing several things. One, that the city will come up with a 20% difference, that they will... that the city is pledging its taxing ability if necessary to pay that 20%. No one thinks that's going to be necessary, but they require that to be in there. Doesn't have anything to do with... it doesn't have to memorialize the starting date, it just is basically memorializing... can't talk. Memorializing the fact that the city acknowledges that it owes 20% of the overall cost, and that they will pay that 20%, including any cost overruns.
And this is, the state will receive that? The state receives the resolution?
Yes, they will receive it. Yes, they will receive a copy of it.
Okay, great. Any other discussion?
If somebody forgets it, I'm sure they'll ask for it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 7D, discuss and take action on the GAN, the grant advancement note? An advancement? Resolution and bond note.
Resolution number 1414, a resolution of the governing body of the city of Fairview, Tennessee authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of grant anticipation notes not to exceed $480,000. Move for approval.
Second. First and second, any discussion?
Mayor, if I may, this is the resolution that authorizes the city, if they so desire, or if they need to, to sell grant anticipation notes, and the note itself is attached to this. It's not filled out, doesn't have to be filled out until such time as the city decides it wants to sell grant anticipation notes. But if and when they do, the authorization will already be there. The only thing you would have to do, the city would have to do, is fill out the bond anticipation note form, submit it to the state, and it has to be approved by not only this board, but it has to be approved by the state of Tennessee. And at that point in time, if and when the city desires to sell those notes, or has the need to sell those notes for this project, I will point out that obviously, it could only be sold to finance this project. You would do that at that time, but we do need to go ahead and get the approval of the resolution, so that if and when we need, if and when we need this, you won't have to go through the passing of the resolution process, you'll only have to complete and sign the note.
I just want to clarify that with the workshop, this was all discussed, for the citizens, that this was all discussed, and we went over with the bank, and it seems to be our best option. And I think that it's very little risk, we may not have to take the money, but it's there so we can move forward. So I really think to save the grant, and to help get these road improvements, this is the best way to do it. Wouldn't be what I would have chosen to do, I would have liked the money if it been in the bank, but it is what it is, and we need to move forward. And I think we've talked about several different ways as a board, that we may not, you know, have to pull from it, but if we do, hopefully with some of the work that Frank and Mr. Hall have done, that the refunds will come quickly. So I just wanted to make a public announcement during this time, since it's been a lot of discussion, that I feel like that this is a good way for us to go.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number 7E, discuss and/or take action on First Bank Commitment Letter. Says Mr. Cantrell.
Yes, mayor, that... let me expand a little bit on something that Commissioner Carroll said. The GAN anticipation note sales and the commitment of First Bank, I think was a very smart move on behalf of the city, because it's very possible that the city may not have to borrow any money on either one of them. And if they do, I mean, if they don't, the money's committed, it's sitting there, you don't pay any interest until you actually receive the funds, and it just gives you two routes to take, whichever one, at the time that the money became necessary to be used on this project, then the board could decide, do we want to go to the bank and get the loan? Do we want to go to the sale of anticipation notes? The bank has... the letter that they had prepared is a typical bank commitment letter. One of the things that I'd like to point out, and it was pointed out at the workshop also, but the interest rate on this is 3.25%, and again, you don't pay any interest on anything until you start to... until you actually receive the funds. There is one thing that does bother me a little bit about this, and it's not anything that the bank did that was incorrect or wrong. I'm not sure that... the only way that... if this board votes to accept this letter as of today, and then authorizes the bank to go ahead and prepare the documents for the loan, so that the money would be sitting there and committed in case the city needs it, they're saying that this has to be completed by September 30th, and I'm not sure, I don't want to speak for the bank, they require that they prepare the papers, and that's fine, because they want it done the way they want it for their bank. Everyone has a few different things to go through. The bank needs to either do one of two things, tell the city that they can get those documents to the city in time for, and I hate to mention this word, but for a special meeting for the city to memorialize in a resolution, the passing or acceptance of the set of papers that are documents that the bank has to prepare, or extend the time for them to accept this. If the city accepts this letter tonight, and I think it would be proper to do that, and signs off on it and sends it back, the bank needs to be informed that for the city to act on this by the 30th, those documents are going to have to be prepared post haste, and time for you to schedule a special meeting for that purpose only, or they need to extend that September 30th date for you to pass your resolution, because in anything like this, I would want to be able to list in the resolution the documents that you're passing, and I can't do that at this time, because I don't know what they're going to send, and I wouldn't want to put something in there approving subject to something that we don't know what the subject to is. I don't think the bank... I think they were very willing to do, and the city owes them a thank you for that, but they could either, and if they get the documents here, where you could act on them, or extend that September 30th date to some date in October, or the first October regular meeting. Because once you accept this, they're going to have to be authorized to complete their documents, and then I think of something this size, you'd want a resolution in there accepting those documents. That's all I have.
Oh, excuse me. I can get that date changed to coincide with our next meeting. I was the one that put in the 30th to correspond with the deadline on the grant itself. So they were willing to do that, and I feel that they would be willing to put it to our next meeting. So I can address that tomorrow morning.
And that timeframe is fine, I mean, because I guess we could have a special meeting, if it's necessary.
It's whatever y'all choose to do, but you just... I'll do whatever's necessary.
Okay, but would we still be in compliance with the grant?
Yes ma'am.
This is just compliance with their letter, because you've already notified the grant people that you accept it. So I see no reason, personally, just my own opinion, to do anything other than accept this, and then let them change it to your first meeting, because then I'll get a copy of those documents before then, and have the resolution, because something this big needs to be in writing, we don't need to be searching through minutes for it.
I agree.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the commitment letter contingent on the bank changing the date to October 2nd, which would be our first meeting in October, so they would move it two days for us.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. 8 is 7F, discuss and/or take action on the revised interlocal agreement between Williamson County and the city of Fairview for the shared cost of the expansion of the Fairview Library. Mr. Cantrell?
Yes, mayor. First of all, I'd like to express my appreciation to the county attorney. I discovered absolutely the utmost cooperation that you could ever expect. I'm, again, giving you my opinion, I know this board wants this to be started and concluded as soon as possible, and what I got from talking with the county is that they do also... I think this will be something that will be easy to swim through the river of, because it's real easy to work with people who want to work with you. And I want to thank the county attorney for that. I'm sure he was like I was when we started talking about, when I looked through the minutes, the things that needed to be added, that he has a board he has to satisfy, and I have a board I have to satisfy, and we went on from there. The only thing that I... there are several changes in this that was good for both parties. It clearly spells out that Fairview is agreeing to be liable for $90,025 or 50% of the construction cost. We also discussed the... and they added and agreed to... they'll request the bids, they're going to oversee the project, but they're going to give the city of Fairview notice of the date, time, and place of the opening, they're going to provide you a copy of the construction plans, and this was a biggie that they very readily agreed to. Both the city and the county will have to approve the plans, which gives you something the plans won't go back to be construction started until both entities approve it. So if there's a conflict in what this board wants to do, and the county board wants to do, both boards can meet, or they can appoint representatives to go, however they want to do it, but it'll have to be worked out before it goes back. The only thing that was not in here, and it doesn't concern me anymore, it may concern some members of the board, if they do, we can go back on that, but the square footage of it, they wanted to leave it kind of open, so that if they get a really good bid, they can take it without any further processing. In other words, if we spend $90,025, if they spend $90,025, you're looking at $180,050. And that's a lot of money to me. And if they... if you come in and leave that flexibility in there, you might get, you know, 1,000 square feet. So I told them that I would be happy to bring that to the board and see if I could sell it to them, based on the other stuff that's been put in here, such that if it comes in at 60 square feet, you're not going to sign off on the plan. You want to get the maximum you can get, and I think that's the easiest way to get it. And I don't have any problem with that now, that both boards have to approve it. And I said I would present that to the board, and if you approve this as it is, I think it'd be an easy document to work with, but we've got the big changes that we need to get in there, and it was amazingly easy. It's as easy as any contract negotiations I've conducted in 35 years of practicing law. It's just like, here it comes.
In fact, go ahead. I'd just like to add, I was in attendance primarily for this vote, just to like to add, it went 23 to 0, so I just want to put that out for information purposes.
Thank you.
Well, I do have one question in your statement there. You said $90,000, and then you said 50%?
It's 50% not to exceed.
We pay 50%. Yeah, I said, we pay 50% of the total cost, but it's not to exceed $90,000.
I didn't hear the "not to exceed."
Yeah, now, the reason I said that, if the county wants to spend $200,000, we'd pay... then we would pay $90,025.
That's okay, I just didn't hear "not to exceed."
Yeah, and it's in there in three or four places.
Move for approval, second.
Discussion?
Let me add one other thing, mayor. We're going to execute this in duplicate, so each party will have an original copy.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. Many hands make merry work. Thanks everyone who's put their hands to this project. All right, moving on to new business. A, discuss and/or take action on Bill 2014-22.
Is it 22 or 24?
It's 22.
I see that.
Ordinance 844.
On my copy.
One of them's a typo maybe.
Whichever one of them's correct then. An ordinance for the amendment to the city of Fairview, Tennessee budget for fiscal year 2014-15 budget. My copy reads 24, but the agenda reads 22.
This budget amendment is to transfer funds from the tree bank account to the general fund account for purchase of trees to be planted for the friends and the community garden.
Move for approval, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Again, that's another community movement. Thanks for everyone whose hands in community garden, Bowie, friends of the park, tree committee. Thanks everyone. 8B, discuss and/or take action on scanner lease for codes department and print smart agreement. Mr. Hubner?
This is our whole scanner as the lease is expired, and this would be a much more today, upgraded scanner, and it would be used in conjunction with the plotter that's in my office too, so that actually we're talking about being able to reproduce match up to 42 inches wide. This is going to help our operation in several ways. One way, when we have a set of plans submitted to us from a developer that needs to go to the city engineer, rather than him make a trip which costs the city money, we can digitize those plans and send it to him. He'll also get it quicker that way than would the next time he's here. Also, we have in our office a pile of old plans that we need to... what I'd like to be able to do is to start in our spare time, start scanning all those plans, so we can digitize. we can digitize and maybe destroy the paper copies. So, we'll have records that'll be much more available, and much easier to file, and much easier to bring up if we need. This will cost $15 more a month than what we're paying now for the existing scanner, but I feel that it would start worth that additional expense to have that upgraded scanner. It is within the budget. My item I have is a $2,000, which would be over $6,000. So, it is within our budget.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion.
I think what you're telling us is gonna pay for it just by engineers' fees along with those trips for what we pay them to come down here.
Yes, sir.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Other discussion?
Mayor, may I add something?
Yes, sir.
I have read the contract, and they do give us some leeway that if I, as a citizen, was renting this equipment, would not have. It has a termination clause in it that says, if you're a governmental entity, and you can prove you are, and I think we can do that, if, at any time during the rental period, if the legislative body does not appropriate funds to pay for this rental, you can terminate the agreement upon 30 days' notice to the, to the entity that we're renting it from. You'd have to pay everything if you owed them anything up to that time, but you wouldn't pay anything after that. And the civilian, what I refer to as the civil part of the thing, if, if I was a private entity and rented this, there is no set-off. I can tell them, "Come get the equipment," but I gotta pay the fee for the whole rental period. And I thought that was interesting. You don't see that, see, occasionally, but not a whole lot. And I also would assume, and I'm sure Mr. Humbert would be able to answer this, if you digitize this and put it on a machine, you're gonna have a whole lot less trash laying around in your office too, aren't you?
Yes, sir, that's right.
They're, they're very important, the documents are very important, but I've never seen anybody that stores the documents in the office. If it is not in a closet somewhere where they fall out and hit you in the head, they look like junk, they're just sitting there, a pile of junk in the office, to somebody who walks by. And that was not the, what I wanted to add. I do like the termination clause, in case you got into position where, you know, you didn't, for whatever reason, did not appropriate the money, then you could get out of the contract.
How much do you think we're spending in a matter, like, how many times can you give me an estimate of you, that you would have to send plans over to the engineer? I know it's several times, but if you could give us...
With, right now, the way things are happening, we probably have two, or three sets of plans a month that we send to him, or he has to come over and pick it up. So, it's, I think the extra $5 would be, I think we could, you know, I think our paper set up, the extra amount, which is based on a monthly basis. We're now getting two and three sets of plans. As we grow, you know, we need to, we need this board updated equipment too, so we can do things faster. Not only what's in the office, but we have a tremendous overreach out of public works building that we need to digitize all of that. That's, that's just wasting the space we use for some of those.
Question. Is any, can any of this, as I recall, when people submit the plans, they have to submit multiple copies.
Yes.
Will this affect that in any way? And, and then multiple copies are turned around and provided to the planning commission, will any of this be able to be, impact that in a positive way, where we'll have all these copies floating around?
We can, we'll build the others to make copies ourselves. I think what we're doing is putting that expense on, providing them for, we can give them, or we can hand them out to our, but we can always, if someone, if you don't have enough copies or if someone wants to pay for a copy, we can make, we can do it ourselves. Is that accurate?
Well, not really. It, it, what I'm trying to get to is that if we, if, if the contractor brings in a copy.
Right.
And we digitize it.
Right.
Then, once it's digitized, then it seems to me foolish to have nine members of the planning commission have a paper copy, and that, and the contractor have to submit three copies, when they could submit one, and now it's digitized, and we could give copies to everybody.
Right.
I mean, I, I think there's some savings there for paper and savings there for the contractor, too.
We could probably, we could probably phase out requiring copies from them, and then we could digitize and send it electronically to the planning commission members.
Well, that, that's where I was going with it. So, there is potential tied to that system to do that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of businesses that, that I'm familiar with, has them submit one copy so they can check it, one paper copy so they can check it with the digitized copy and have them also submit you a digitized copy. And that's all they submit, is one original hard copy so that, 'cause sometimes it, it will mess up. And then just have them submit you a digitized copy, and you don't have to do that.
Okay.
So, the scanner does print?
Yes, Mayor, I have, we have it printing. It's an actual, it's a plotter, it's a weekly machine in my office. This will, this scanner, instead of being independent like the one we have now, it'll be attached to it. It will scan, print, turns out plotter into print, actually, or print machine.
If I remember, we just purchased a plotter a couple of years ago, didn't we? A new plotter? So, it's, it's pretty updated already.
Would this also be beneficial for, like, scanning in our land use maps and scanning in things that we wanna broadcast, put on the website, things of that nature?
Yes.
Awesome, okay. Any other discussion?
Um, do you have any input on the $50 more a month?
No, it's in his budget.
Okay. So, it's not gonna affect the cash flow that bad?
I feel, I feel confident in this purchase.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 8C, discuss and take action on scheduling Board of Commissioners workshop for audit review. Mr. Darty?
Thank you, Mayor. I talked with Sarah, and she, and Ms. Hardy, and they would like to schedule a workshop at 5:30 on October 2nd, if that, if that pleases the board.
Time.
From 5:30 to 7:00.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move that we call a special meeting on October the 2nd at 5:30, leading up into our 7 o'clock meeting for this audit review. I feel that this is a matter that the public that can't be here should be able to watch at home or watch in the future via YouTube, and also feel that, not part of the motion, but that we need to be moving away from workshops.
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
Now, was that part of your motion to do away with workshops, end with this one? Or do you're just, is that afterthought? Or just an additional comment?
That was just an additional comment, no part of the motion. This is just for, have a special meeting instead of a workshop.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 8D, discuss and/or take action on the new employment health plan.
Thank you, Mayor. We've worked pretty hard with, with Tim White, with Benefits, Inc., the Finance Committee. I guess right now, the best, best course of action is have Mr. White come up and give an overview.
Hello, welcome.
Hey, thank you, thank you very much. You should have a, there should be a three-page summation included in your packet. The one is, I believe it's, it's kinda hard to tell, but one of them's green.
Can we get it on the overhead?
Copy if it's on the overhead, Tom, or you got one?
Are we working the colored copies or the black and white copies, please?
Color copy, I think we can do.
I think it's the last one we got, you know? I think these were the original, but he's probably referring to green, 'cause his is probably green.
Gotcha.
Black and white?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. Well, that's the first, that is the first slide I wanted to discuss, so. All right, what you, what this slide represents right here is the, is the, you've got three columns here. You've got a, you've got your, your, the, there's three budgetary items that are listed here. You've got your, the total medical and dental insurance premiums, which falls underneath 519, that's the first column. Then you have, underneath that, you have the 522, which is the HRA, the Health Reimbursement Arrangement, that, which reimburses deductibles on behalf of, within your medical insurance plan. Then you have column 36750, which is the employee contributions. When you look at the budget column, that is what, that is, those are the numbers that are, that was the, that was the, the budget numbers that were passed in July. For the medical and dental insurance premiums, there were $350,000 that were budgeted for the HRA, $75...
I'm sorry, can we take the screen? It keeps jumping in and out. I thought I was messed up.
Sorry to go.
The HRA was, the, the, was $75,000. And then there was a, $85,000 going back into the budget for employee contributions for those premiums. You net all that out, and then the, the, the total budget from last year was for, is, equals $340,000. Right now, currently, from July through, which July is, from July 1st of this past year through October 2014, we, the insurance premiums that will have, that will, you know, there's, that will have been spent are $121,961.92. The HRA projected, there's, there's $44,000 that have, that's been actually spent, but the projected amount is $47,784. We know that the employee contributions will be 26, $26,944 totaling, if you, once you back, the, once you subtract the employee contributions, $142,801.90. Your renewal is, begins in November, and so you're, you're, when, if you do the quick math from the 340 that was budgeted, and what's been spent with the HRA and the, and the, and the, with your medical insurance premiums and your HRA and the contributions, you've got about 100, you've got, you can say the balance. So, we're trying to work, one of the main things that we, that the city manager and the CFO were attempting to do was try, was to find the best plan possible for what was left in the budget for this year. In doing so, there's several things that, you know, with what, with the plan modifications that we've made, the insurance premiums, based on the same enrollment, you know, that you have today, you will have, those, that, that amount will be $245,601.60 from November to July. Your HRA expected expenses after modifications, which I'll get into in just a second, are $51,750. And your employee contributions will be, will be $95,600. Total, if, the total being $196,501.60, which, if you add what you spent from now, you know, from the first four months of this year, with, combined with what you expect in the next eight months, you're looking at a $339,303.50 with, you know, which is just almost zeroing out the budget. In order to do that, though, there's, 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 there's actually two other pages in your packet that kinda give you a plan comparison. Can you show both?
You probably can. Show them both, side by side?
That'd be great. None of them still on there.
Can we overlap them?
Sure.
Hey, we can go do this to it, maybe. You get it?
What you got on the, what you see on the left, that's, that's the, that is the current plan design. That is a, that the city has currently, the, and has the, you've got the, you've got the total rates that are, if you break it down by column, here's your, you've got your contract counts, which, you know, you've got individual two-person families, so it's a complete breakdown. You've got, and the counts represent how many people, you've got 14 individuals that are, that are elected medical providers, you've got, you've got 14 two-person contracts, and you have 27 family contracts currently underneath the, with the medical insurance with the city. Current monthly rates are, there are $230.77, $4.59 for two-person, $666.04 for premiums. Out of those premiums, currently, the employees are, in the next column, that is their monthly The residential coverage, it costs, it is a $36 monthly charge, but for two-person, it's $152. Actually, for two-person, anybody that has dependents, whether it be two-person or family coverage, that cost is the same. So, it's a, it's $152 a month for an individual with, with dependents. Cities, the cities paying the balance of those premiums. And if you just take it out to the, you know, to the right on the monthly, you can get your total from the, as you move down the page, the monthly, the monthly, Fair, the City of Fairview's amount is $20,906. The dental, the dental is, currently is, 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 is 100% paid for by the city, doesn't matter if it's, if you've got individual or, individual or the dependents, it's, that amount is $2,847. The total city cost per month being $23,754.48. Currently, the HRA, which is the, doesn't have any bearing on the dental, but it is a, it's your, it's your deductible reimbursement for your, for your medical insurance. The city is reimbursing the first $3,000, 45 with individual coverage. They are reimbursing the first $6,000 for anyone but individual and dependents. The, what you see is the maximum exposure at the bottom, the, and the expected exposure, which, you know, the, your, the expected claim being at $147,000 will probably, I mean, will probably be real close to that. Right now, to current, your...
Right now, to current, your, your HRA claims from November 1st to present are $130,717. Now, in order to keep that plan, well, in order to stay within the budget, there have to be several things that need to happen. First, first, there need to be, there needs to be some plan modifications. The, the, fine comparison on the right-hand side is the proposed plan. The rates, you can kinda see, I've got the same count, you, this is 14, 14 and 27. The rates on the proposed plan are...
Can you make that bigger, just the one we're talking about right now? Like, get rid of the, do, since we're talking about the proposed, that way they can see? Scoop that over.
The rates on the proposed plan are individual coverage is 246.62, for two-person, it's 490.73, and family coverage is 712.16. Approximately a 5% increase over the last year's, over last year's premiums. Out of an order to fit within the budget, the, the budget constraints, there's, there won't go, we looked at this several different ways in the finance committee meeting, work session, looked at the numbers that, that made the most sense of the, of the work. There'd have to be some employee funding modifications, the, the individual, uh, monthly amount have to be increased to $75, two-person, two-person contract be increased to 200, and the family coverage will be increased to $300 a month. City picking up the balance with, you know, the, you can see where the, the city's balance is. Uh, take it out, carry it out, the monthly premium, the monthly amount, that the city, the premium portion would be $17,601.22, which is, if you look, is less than, than last year. And one other, from a dental, as far as dental is concerned, the recommendation from the committee was to, to pay for the individual contract for dental only. You know, if anybody, the, you know, employee chose to, like, in the coverage, then that would be a voluntary election. So the city's portion would, would in effect drop to $1,148.98 a month. One other note, uh, the, there is, there is the, uh, the HRA, one thing that, uh, was also, uh, that, that, that was modified is the HRA. In the past, there had been, it was, it was, the dollar, first day dollar was reimbursed at 100%. The recommendation of committee was to, to pay 50% of the first $4,000, which, in effect, you've got, you know, your expected claim being at $56,000, your total HRA exposure happening in your, your expected plan. It should also be some impact on the, on the prescription, there's a prescription change. All prescriptions, there would be no prescriptions reimbursed over the HRA at this point, which, you know, it's kinda hard to, to, it's really, kinda, can't illustrate that, and it's, they're, they're, they're expensive for having that, you will not have in your HRA anymore. It's been, you mentioned group projects before, this was definitely a group project, and it's been, been about a six-week group project. I appreciate everyone's help and input, that's been involved.
Questions, comments? What are the wishes? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second discussion?
If I could, may I?
Yes, sir.
I was one of the people that worked on the committee, and I, I wanna give special consideration to Tom and Don, and he put a lot of effort into this, and I just had a couple of comments I want us to consider as we work through this, and then I have an amendment to add to the motion. Government service has some characteristics that generally apply to all levels of the government, and one of these principles, as I see it, is that salary is typically below what the average is for an occupation, but that is supplemented by a, uh, benefits, retirement, insurance, vacation days, that are the equalizers, so that people that work for the government understand that, that they're not gonna make as much money, but they, they get it in benefits. For years, Fairview provided what I thought of as a citizen, a sub-level of service, and I attribute part of that to the fact that we had a high number of, of employee turnovers. Maybe it wasn't so they didn't wanna do a good job, but nobody was ever around long enough to learn, learn the skills. And I, I think one of the things that's happened to us is that we now have a much more stable, progressive, dedicated workforce, and part of the promise, I think, that these people came to our employment for was the fact that they knew they would make a little less money, but that we had a, a decent benefits package. I think what the group is proposing is a good, fair package. I've heard it characterized as a Cadillac, and to that end, I've spent some of my time contacting human resources at our other cities in Williamson County, the county and the state of Tennessee, and I can tell you unequivocally that our policy is neither a Cadillac nor a Ugo. It is, in some ways, uh, toward the high side, in other ways, it's toward the low side. It, it is, is kind of a middle-of-the-road policy. I will tell you that a couple of things is that, uh, without a doubt, in my opinion, the best policy is Franklin's, and they are not charging their employees what we proposed to charge ours. The policy I probably wouldn't want would be the one offered by the state of Tennessee, and they are charging their employees more than we are proposed to charge ours. So, uh, it's a little hard to, to carry, you know, to, to, the amount of employees involved, everything, they have a lot of different characteristics. But I, I think that overall, we, our, our, some of our thought processes, that we are providing our employees something that's way above the norm, is, is not inaccurate representation of the policy that we are providing, or, or offering here today. The one thing, I do endorse this and, and do plan to vote for it. The one thing that does bother me is the amount of employee contribution increase. As I talked to Brentwood, who implemented a, a system very similar to what we have, they gave their employees two and a half years to prepare for the changeover, not two and a half months or two and a half weeks, really, to prepare, that we're talking about here. And then their current policy, in, in some ways, is, is much better than ours, in other ways, we, we have them beat. For, for example, our co-insurance is 100% after you get to $5,000, theirs is still at 80/20 until you get to $7,000. So, uh, depending upon how significant your medical bills are, you would be better. Their HRA was done a little differently. When they set it up in Brentwood, the, the city deposited over $2 million into a fund, and the employees to participate in the HRA contribute $500 per year, and then the fund is self-managing within itself and has rules, but the, the idea is being that it's not a constant budget process. I tell you all that to, to say that, uh, I, I feel like the increase that we are applying at the employee, individual level of $75 is a $37 increase, and is pretty reasonable for somebody to manage. I feel like the $50 increase for two people, uh, per month is also fairly reasonable, but a $150 increase to our family plan on a monthly basis that basically impacts our younger employees who aren't making as much money, who have, uh, small children, is just too much. So, what I would like to see us do is, I would like for us to amend, for the purpose of the remainder of this fiscal year, the amount of premium that a family will pay to $225, which is going to cost a shortage, if you wanna call it that, of the, of the sheet that they showed, of $16,000. We have $103,000 allocated currently in our overtime budget that we are not spending. We have spent a little bit on mandatory stuff, but generally, we're not spending it, and nobody's planning to spend it. We're, my understanding is, and please correct me, Mr. Hall, if I'm wrong, but we're using comp time, we're avoiding overtime at, at pretty much all costs.
That is correct, Commissioner.
I think that we could take, uh, the funds from the overtime. All that money is money that would normally go to the employees anyway, and we are just making an adjustment from our overtime allocation to the insurance allocation for this fiscal year only. Next year, I think that people belonging to the family should be prepared and make whatever adjustments they need to make to be able to, to cover their full premium. But that would be my amendment to the proposal as presented by Mr. White and, and the Finance Committee. Thank you for listening.
Clarify, did we have a motion before we have that amendment?
Yes. He made the motion, I seconded him.
Do we have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Discussion?
Tom, what would that do? It's, I mean, have you had a chance? Is this the first you've heard of?
No, our, our overtime budget is, is, we're well under. I believe as of August 31st, um, almost $9,000.
So, but we still have the fact that we don't know, that there could be something happen, and that we could need overtime if there was, you know, if we had a bad winter, we had, you know, storms, we might have to have that overtime budget.
If the policy of the city manager is that we're not having overtime, that they're gonna offer comp time, then the answer would be no. But if the city manager changed...
So, what you're saying?
If the city manager changed policy and said we were gonna start spending that money, then yes. But as it is, as we sit here tonight, they're not having any overtime, it's comp time.
That's correct, and we're trying to, to go forward in that the rest of the year until we see where our budget's gonna be in 2015.
Okay, well, I have a couple thoughts, can I?
Well, um, the, the amendment, amendment is about the family policy. Discussion? I, I wanna just kinda ask her part, because at that point, you don't know whether the overtime money is going to be needed or not.
Not unless it was a drastic emergency, but even at that rate, there was comp time actually applied back during the ice storm. So, uh, those boys that work in that division, they like their comp time because of days off to go fishing and that type thing, and they use that comp time when it's not busy, when we're not under any emergency or anything like that, so.
Okay, so just drag, dragging a little bit further, if you did use that overtime in a necessity, what would be a B option for the difference if this goes to, what, July, is that correct, Miss, Commissioner Busell?
Yes, to the end of June.
Okay, to the June 30th timeframe, what would be a B plan, so just to...
Let me clarify something, is that $16,000 a month, or is that $16,000?
$16,000 total. $16,000 total, and just to add a point of clarification, FLSA law indicates that if the government entity, regardless of what level we're at, as federal labor standards act, indicates that if the government entity does not have the money to pay overtime, which if, if we ran out of money in our overtime, then we are not obligated to create money to pay overtime. Comp time is the legal recourse for that. And so, so it is not, if we decide to allocate the monies over and make an adjustment at this point, if we got to the zero balance on overtime, that doesn't create a deficit situation for us, it just means we move to mandatory comp time as, as the, uh, enumeration for the people that are involved.
Time worked.
Time worked.
Okay.
So it's, by doing this, we, we will not create a, a budget negative situation in the overtime. Thank you for letting me in.
Thank you. Other discussion?
I have.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, one of the things is, I had, went in Tom's office the other day, cause I had gone to the Finance Committee meeting and heard the talks, and just wanted clarification. And one of the things I had a problem with the plan was, it just, it is a huge hit. We did have a really good plan, and we were very generous to the employees. So now that, and it's fine, now we need to make budget cuts, we need to fit it in our budget, and, but I did have some concerns with the fact that, you know, it's a big hit to have to do 50/50, and that was one of the options prior, it's not the one presented tonight, and, um, you know, the increase. I do believe we pay lower than the average, I mean, like, the, we, the premiums, we were really low, like, 36, and a lot of people pay, like, my husband is, works for Metro Government, and, you know, we pay 400 a month. So, I think across the board, after hearing a lot of people, a lot of people commenting when I asked the questions, we do have, um, even with what we're offering, a very low monthly cost to the employees. But I also feel the pain of, we're doubling it, and knowing if that was me and my family, that that would be a hard hit if you didn't budget for it. So, with that being said, um, I try to look for ways of, you know, what's, cause the employees, this is not their fault, um, and to have a huge hit is not fair to them. Now, I kinda disagree, I think that at some point in time, we were behind, and we were losing people to Metro and other agencies, because we were no, we were not competitive, and we probably didn't offer a competitive benefit package. But those days are gone. We are competitive with surrounding counties for pay, and we gave a really, really good benefit package, but we no longer have a big fluff of reserves, and we need to live within our means of a budget. Now, with this being said, to be a temporary, the way I understand it, it's just... it's just going to be for an eight-month stint until we can, to get it with our budget. Because one of the problems for, just to explain the way I understand it to the citizens is, you know, we were making projections, but we didn't know what the cost changes were going to be in the insurance world. So we were having to guess. And I think they probably did a good job for a while, but we kind of got off. And so these projections were off. And this year, when Tom came in, it was way off, right? And so what we're having to do is we're having to bring it back at a level where we can budget for it. And I think getting it back on with the city's budget is going to be huge. So this is an eight-month fix. And then hopefully, we could budget correctly and then we can offer whatever plan we want. But there's real live people that will be affected for eight months. And if you have medical conditions like my family does, you can pretty much realize that a lot of this, we're going to have to use our insurance. So I want to be fair. I think a double the amount is a big hit for these employees. But I do, so I actually agree with you. But I'm kind of worried about using overtime and just saying point-blank, we can't, because we don't, we can't, we don't know. We don't know if we're going to need that overtime. The overtime is in case. I mean, the guys have to come to court. I mean, can you guarantee us? I mean, I know you say comp time, but we don't know if there's going to be that disaster that could happen. I just, I don't know. I've given a lot of thought to this. I wish there was a better plan. I wish we didn't have to do this to our employees. I do think eventually, we are going to have to raise the rate, the monthly rate because they're going to have to, I'm sorry, with some of the changes with Affordable Care Act, this is what has happened. Every job, every country, you know, every business, they're being affected with insurance changes and premiums going up and you're getting less for your money. So we are going to have to consider ways that we can fix this and make it still a desirable place to work, but we have to be realistic. And I would just be interested to know if we had any other suggestions besides the overtime, where this money could come from.
Right now, that's the only suggestion I have. Tom, do you have any? Does that nine thousand dollars reflect the last two months?
Let me double-check the figures.
Okay. While he's looking, I might add, Mr. White has shopped us around with several different companies. And this still comes back with his best option. So if y'all want him to elaborate on that while he's checking that, I'd be more than happy for him to do so.
Well, that would be great. That's a great point because I know you said that to me the other day, that y'all did shop and try different ways and try to make this, you know, work within our budget.
We conducted a formal RFP with all other carriers in Tennessee. The only carrier that returned a proposal without just sending a formal declination to quote was Aetna. And Aetna, they were nearly twenty-five percent higher on an apples-to-apples plan. The, you know, the rates, I mean, if you look at it from a, you know, the, I mean, the rates, the actual rates themselves are not, I mean, they're not, they're not going up that, you know, from year, from this year to, you know, even next, the rates are not, it's a five percent jump. You know, there were some, I think next year, there may be, and there's going to be more, there will be more carriers potentially that will emerge. You have Community Health right now that is a, it's born out of the Affordable Care Act. It's the only co-op that's in the state. The only problem with Community Health at this point in time is, is that since it's so new, they don't have a whole lot of traction because they just don't have a, they don't have a network. And, you know, how good is your insurance if you can't, if you're not able to go to the doctors that you'd like to go to? So, you know, there's, every day, we wake up in our office and there's, you know, there's, 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 there's changes going on. Do I think this, do I think the law is, do I think it's going to go away? No, I don't, doesn't. Do I think there's going to be modifications that happen probably for the rest of our lives? Yes, I do. The, you know, the, you know, the, you know, even on your size group though, the rest of the, you know, the big things that could potentially happen are in 2016 when the, when group sizes that are less than a hundred are all going to have to go to these metallic, you know, to the, what they call these essential health benefit plans. And, you know, at that point in time, it's not going to matter what your claims are. The rates are going to be the rates. My rates, you know, with, you know, the rates down at Murphy's are going to be the same as the rates are with the City of Faribault. And really, what you're doing at that point in time is, you know, the, it's, they rolled it out at the beginning of this year and, you know, in, you know, these EHB plans. And they got a, that's when President Obama stopped in April and said, wait, wait a second, we're going to delay this till 2016. I've already had a sneak peek at this. And, you know, the, you know, one thing to consider is, is, I mean, these rates are ugly that are coming up. So there's, you know, the, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but, but, you know, there's, good news is not on the front, on the right side. So they're, and all carriers will be affected by that.
Thank you. One of the other things that I noticed from last year to this year is, you know, we doubled the individual employees. Then we went and added fifty dollars more to the two-person. And then we doubled the family. So, you know, in some ways, if we do bring the two-twenty-five for the family now, it's really not going to be fair to the individual employees. And that's a concern of mine. Because some of them are seeing a more significant increase than others. So that would be something that would concern me.
Well, as I figured it, if I could.
Yeah.
As I figured it, I, the percentages can be a bit deceiving. I figured it as a real dollars. What doesn't come out of my paycheck or what's not in my paycheck? And our employee, our individual is going to be around thirty-seven dollars, thirty-eight dollars. Just round it, say forty dollars. Our plus-one is going to be fifty. And under this plan, our family's going to be a hundred and fifty. And so what, one of the things that I think the Finance Committee is trying to do is to move to a three-tier rather than a two-tier deal. So you couldn't just say, okay, fifty, fifty, fifty. Because if you did that, then the family's not paying their portion since their expenses, there are more of them and there's more expense involved with them. So that's why I added the extra, I just said fifty percent, which, for them, means actually a seventy-five dollar increase. So they pay seventy-five dollars more, the plus-one pays fifty, and the employee pays seventy-five. So that's, that's how I got to that. I didn't use the percentages per se, I was looking in real dollars. It was notable to me that as I talked to the other cities, that Brentwood, Williamson County, and Spring Hill do not, employee insurance is free. Franklin charges you eighty dollars, but their deductible is five hundred dollars. So you really don't, most of their employees get coverage pretty quick compared to our deductible of four thousand. And then for an individual, the state of Tennessee has no deductible. And theirs is one forty. So you have a, you have two people that do, the other two people that charge offer a lot sooner insurance kick in than we do. And so, but like I said, in all cases, the three hundred dollars, it's not that the three hundred dollars is a bad figure. The three hundred dollars is actually very reasonable compared to what family coverage is. It's that, it's the people within our employment that it impacts don't have any time to prepare for it. And that's a pretty significant, if you're making thirty-two thousand dollars a year to lose another hundred and fifty dollars a month, even if you do it tax, before taxes, it's, you know, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars actual spent money. And to do that on such short notice, six weeks' notice, is a pretty tough haul. What we don't want to happen, we have a responsibility to our citizens for sure. We talk about that a lot. We hear a lot, get a lot of feedback on that. But we also have a responsibility as a good employer, to be a good employer. And what we don't want to happen is we don't want to make such a draconian cut or increase the premium so much that we cause people to not take the insurance. Because if they don't take the insurance, the catastrophic effect on that and people under financial strain bring that to work. And we're in a good place with our employees. City Manager Hall has done an excellent job of really getting the right people in the right jobs and the camaraderie is very high and the Nature Fest is a good example. We had a number of city employees out there Saturday. And I hate to see us lose that over money. And the reason I chose overtime was because the money at overtime, that's money that goes to the employees anyway. If we work the overtime, they get the money. If we, if we were paying overtime, the three hundred dollars might not be as bad for them to trot up sore. But we're not paying overtime. We have that large pot of money sitting there. And while I know our goal is to save as much of it as possible, I think this is a legitimate transfer reason to do that. And then next year, they have time to prepare for it. Excuse me. I would like to see our long-range plan and the people from the committee for me, I'd like to see our long-range plan get away from this HRA system. I don't like that. I think we ought to take, determine how much money we want to put into the premiums for the employees, how much insurance we want to buy. And that's what we ought to buy. And then they can pick their policy and they have to pay whatever their choices are, their cafeteria-type plan. We couldn't do that this year. It was, again, it would be, we didn't have enough, we weren't in a budget posture to be able to do that. The HRA system really works best if you can do like Brentwood did and that's put a pot of money over there and just let it sit there as a pot. Really shouldn't be paid out of the, you know, the revenues that we have. So that was my rationale and I spent a lot of time researching it and thinking about it because I wanted us very much to not, to have to put any more money into it. I wanted us to try to find a way. But I just think, I just think we are not being a good employer if we go all the way to three hundred with the family. And that's how I got there. And I'll try to be quiet.
No, I mean, I appreciate you taking the time and looking at, and looking it up because that's one of the things, me working for Williamson County, I know what I have and what my husband's plan has. So I know we weren't totally, we were given a good plan basing it off my own experience, but I did ask several people and we learned how good, especially in corporate America, the governmental plan is. I do worry about the employees, but I also worry about using money that's assigned to overtime, just because we don't know.
Tom, did you find anything on that?
Oh, yes. Through August thirty-first, eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars under budget.
And we've got how much budgeted for the year?
I had to find it.
Sorry about that.
Hundred and three thousand.
That's what I was thinking, somewhere in that range. What I might add on that, basically, the three divisions that create overtime is the Police Department, Parks Department, Public Works. The Fire Department is usually there under a different pay scale. So the directors in each one of those divisions is doing an excellent job on holding down the overtime. So I think the trend that we're under, I think we'll be able to handle that. Hopefully, that there won't be a disaster or hopefully, there won't be any emergency. But, you know, I believe that we can handle the sixteen thousand over the period of the next several months.
Other discussion? We have an amendment towards the family premium limiting at two-twenty-five?
Yes.
And the difference, our money's coming from, you want to state your motion again?
Sure. My amendment is that for the remainder of this fiscal year, that the family plan, the employee contribution will be two hundred and twenty-five dollars instead of the three hundred dollars that's stated. And that the additional monies, which I calculated, we had, we understood, twenty-seven people were on the family plan. The family plan, twenty-seven times seventy-five times eight, which is eight months and seventy-five dollars a month reduction, which means it's going to cost, we're going to have to find an additional sixteen thousand dollars. And I want to take that from the overtime allocation, reduce overtime allocation from one oh three down to would be eighty-seven. Is that right? Does my math working right tonight? And the sixteen thousand would go over into the medical reimbursement, just be a swap of categories.
I need a total on that. Can you give me a figure of how much that would be per? Like if we make that difference, I don't know how many families we have on the families. You have twenty-seven?
The math you just did, give a total on that.
Okay, so give it.
It's twenty-seven families.
Times.
And the hit that we'll be adding is seventy-five dollars a month.
Okay.
So twenty-seven times seventy-five and then times eight months.
Sixteen-two.
Sixteen thousand two hundred dollars is what it is for the remainder of the year. And that's assuming that all twenty-seven families, you know, sign up or, you know, it can vary a little bit because of the, of the, you know, somebody could go into the family coverage or they could come out of the family coverage. You just don't, you don't know. But you're looking at around sixteen thousand dollars. And there's no, right now, there's no need to make that adjustment. We can monitor it throughout the year. You might have people leave. You might have situations that you didn't need to make the adjustment because the HRA amount didn't get used. But what I wouldn't want us to do is I wouldn't want us to use up all the overtime and then not have the money available at the end. So it's six and one-half of those are when you pull it. But I think we need to know that and that's where it comes from. But it's seventy-five dollars per person. And for twenty-seven, and that comes up to sixteen-two. And that's how I got to sixteen thousand.
And who seconded?
Tony.
Second.
Okay. I would like, do y'all have any opinions on this?
I think it sounds good. I think it's fair to give them an opportunity to catch up rather than just a big hit at one time. I think it's fair to give them an opportunity to, to catch up rather than just a big hit at one time.
I appreciate all your work, Tim.
I think it's definitely fair, knowing that there are other municipalities out there and county governments that don't charge their employee a zero premium. For anyone to say that we were offering a Cadillac plan, I guess that means everybody else has a Mercedes plan. So I don't, I don't know what that actually means, but I think y'all have done some good work, and I appreciate it.
Well, they're only charging the individual, they don't give family coverage for free. Did you find anybody that give family coverage?
Yeah, Spring Hill does.
So, so they give everybody?
Spring Hill covers their entire work, two-hundred employees.
So they have the Cadillac.
Their entire workforce, Spring Hill covers everybody and their families, and pays their dental. And their, and their deductible is a thousand dollars.
No, that's the Cadillac plan.
Yeah, it's, that's a Cadillac plan.
Is anyone?
Why they have a GM plan?
Is anyone on the board currently on the family insurance plan?
I am.
I'm not.
I'm not on the family plan?
Do you do the cruising yourself?
No, ma'am.
Do you not have personal interest?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm on the family plan as my wife is an employee of the city. But that has nothing to do with.
Voting on whether you don't or do pay premium?
There's been a lot of discussion that's been brought up on Facebook. And we've just discussed the, the point about the county government. And the Williamson County Commission is on their insurance, it's offered to them as well. Mr. White represents many county governments and city governments across his coverage area, along with utility districts. And all of their board of directors are allowed, not all, but most, he said many, he named off ten probably. And I can't imagine, Larry, is there anything that would prohibit me from voting on this tonight because of that? When you've got a, a full board, that every one of them was on a plan? How could a plan ever get passed if they're not allowed to vote on it? Could you explain that?
Are you saying that, that every board member?
There are, there are several entities that, not the city of Fairview, but just say the Greater Dixon Gas Authority, or the Water Authority of Dixon County. If all of their members are part of the plan, how could they say that they can't vote for it? It doesn't, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, you'd have the same, it'd be comparable to a, a tax increase. If you voted a tax increase, that's for general services for the citizens of, of, and for where we are in Fairview, then everybody would be getting a benefit from that. If you, I mean, there's times when, if, if you don't do the, if somebody don't vote on it, I mean, every time that, that you've got something personal on there, personally, I mean, myself, I wouldn't. But as to whether there's a statute, where that would be a conflict of interest, it'd be a close call. The only way that you could, could probably have a definite answer to it that most everybody would accept is if that person's vote was challenged, and the board upheld that challenge, and then that person filed a declaratory judgment action in the chance to record. Me personally, no, I wouldn't. But if you were talking about the tax, passing of a, of a tax bill for the city, if you live in the city, you're going to get some benefit of that because it's for, out of the general fund, where it's garbage pickup or whatever it is.
So why is that any different than the insurance policy? If I'm, if I'm, if I sit up here in, in the budget process, vote to assess a tax rate, I'm assessing that to myself. What's any different from that than the insurance plan that's provided to the employees?
Well, there's, there's probably not any difference in it.
So, but everybody on this board voted for the tax rate, to be said, at a certain number. And it affected their pocketbooks, is that be correct? When the mayor voted for that, she voted for it, and it affects her the same as it does me?
It affects everybody.
Okay.
But, you know, an insurance rate probably doesn't affect everybody in the city. That's the reason, that's the distinction between some of the things. If you're going to get personal gain out of it, then you've always got to look at it as a, is this a potential conflict? But, you know, in, in the case of a tax, any board in this state that votes for a tax increase on the, on the general population of that city, that lives in that city, faces that, and they all vote.
Right. Well, I don't, I don't, I, I always thought, in the fourteen years I've been here, if you disclosed your interest, you didn't have to recuse yourself. But I have no problem recusing myself because I'm quite certain this is going to pass because of all the employees it's going to affect.
Yeah, there's, there's some instances in which, if you disclose it, but if you're going to get something directly personal out of it, it depends, there's, there's some stuff that depends on when you were elected, what was in effect at the time. But, you know, and, and as a general thing, if you, if the person is going to collect some benefit out of it, obviously you couldn't sell the insurance to the city. But if you're going to collect some personal benefit out of it, I would recuse myself, that's just me. Does the law absolutely require that on something that, that would be a smaller amount of, of gain that you would get? That, like I said, then we get a definite answer out of that thing, just have your favor, not to recuse yourself challenged, and then file a declaratory judgment.
Okay.
If I could add something here, and I probably remember it because it impacted me, and then to my learned colleague, Larry, if you recall, we had this discussion ad nauseam back when the city was discussing, could I be paid to be a park ranger? And whether or not that meant I could vote on the parks, on the budget, because it impacted everything versus this. And, and I don't have that decision with me, or your opinion, or the information from the Attorney General. But, but simply stating, as I understand it, Vice Mayor, you, you must disclose it, you must indicate publicly that you would take a vote, that you will be voting your conscience regardless of that, and then, and that you either intend to abstain or not abstain. If you vote and the board wishes to discount your vote, then one of us would need to make a motion to throw out your vote, and then it would be by majority rules to throw out your vote. And if we did so, then your vote would not count.
That is correct as to what you're stating there, as far as, as that goes. There is an ethics statute that says, the statute that you're quoting from must yield to the ethics statute, which is the reason I said, and what you were saying about discounting the vote is also correct. But if he wanted to get a definitive decision, and I wish somebody would, but nobody's going to pay for that.
There is no definitive law.
No, that's the reason I said.
In best that, the determination of the ethics is what he determines. He determines his ethics first, not us.
Right, but.
We, we have the right to discount his vote after he makes his decision, should he choose to vote.
And, and he has a right then if he wants to file a declaratory judgment, saying, because the Chapter thirteen statute, which is the, the ethics statute, says in the statute that the Section six statute, which you're talking about, must yield to the, the Section thirteen statute. But, I mean, it certainly, if he discloses it, that would go a long ways to saying, I'm not trying to sneak something. But as, as to giving you a definitive decision, and I don't like not be able to give you a definitive decision, but I can't, because nobody's ever challenged that, they're not going to spend the money.
Tim, you, you brought a booklet to the finance meeting, and it had all our employees listed, and the rates, and that they were under family plan and single. Do you have that today? Yeah, can you look up and see what the Board of Commissioners is listed under? Down that back page, there's a page, it had, it had both Mr. Sutton and Mr. Johnson is receiving family plan. So I just wanted to make sure, since they were having a discussion.
I don't have a family plan, I have a plus-one.
I know, but I'm just saying what the sheet said, unless I read it wrong. I just wanted you, it's on that back page?
I've got the bill, I mean, the, the, the bill is going to have everybody listed on there that, that's, that's on there, I mean.
Yeah, okay, come here and I'll show you what I'm talking about. It's the back page of your book, I saw it. And it said whether or not, I just don't know, maybe I was reading the wrong line. But it said, it listed Stuart Johnson and Tony R. Sutton, maybe that's, was that Tony? I mean, oh, it wouldn't have been Mark. I was just curious to see, because if it was written wrong, this is not what I.
I just told you mine was.
Well, I know.
I said it a while ago.
If you want to look at your bill.
No.
And then that got, that's got your, you know, everybody what they're taking right there.
Okay, well, I was just making sure we're right, since we're talking about it. But it doesn't say if they're a family plan or single.
It does.
Okay, what does it say?
That's what the As and the, you know, the Bs, there's your rights right there, so, I mean.
Okay, so a B would be?
Just draw it across right there, I mean, you can see what everybody's rights are.
I know, but what, are they under family or individual, how do I tell that?
It's the rate.
Okay.
You know, the, the, Mr. Sutton is, just, I can't read it upside down, just draw the.
The four-fifty-nine?
Four-fifty-nine, that's right.
Okay, so that's a single.
No, that's not, that's employee, that's two persons.
Oh, two people, employee plus-one?
That's right.
Okay.
That's, that's what I was saying, I believe.
No, you said individual, that's why I was just.
I did not, I said plus-one.
Plus-one, okay, okay. I just wanted to know, because I saw it in the book, and I was like, wait, let's make sure we're.
That's the entire premium, is it not? That's the entire premium, that's not what, you know, that, everybody, you know, the, the, the city of Fairview is forcing is, is, it's broken down on your sheet, you know, that green, you know, that we had up there on the, on the, they're treated just like everybody else.
I was just making, I understood it right, because it looked different.
I understand, it's an election year, and I understand completely, thank you.
Okay, that's what I wanted, I wanted to know, because the sheet said, it looked, looked to me like family, and I got it out of your book, so I was just making sure I was right.
But to clarify, it's not family, right? It is not family, correct?
It's two-person.
Thank you.
It's, yeah. So, anyway, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Stuart is under, his wife.
I'm under.
Right, and they'll probably change that, this, you'll probably change that this next year. It made total sense to me that your, you took the plan before your wife took it, and so why would you change over in the middle of the year? You're probably going to change it to, right, or you're going to leave it under Stuart, I don't know. But, Tim? Okay, okay.
It was offered, I could have had it as a commissioner and did not.
But you didn't choose, okay.
And did not accept the insurance until my wife was an employee of the city.
I just was confused.
And I could have had it as a commissioner and did not. So I just, if we're going to disclose everything, I did not take the city insurance until my wife was an employee.
Okay, well, what I found.
And I will recuse myself from the vote, just to speed this along.
Okay, but it does say Stuart Johnson. I'm just going to say, this that came out of your book, it doesn't have brandy, but it don't matter to me.
I don't know what the, I don't know what you're looking, I mean, it could be.
It was what y'all had here at the finance meeting, it was how much each employee spent, and it was how it was under. I didn't bring it up, I'm just making sure, since we're talking about it, we're clarifying it right.
There is an employee listing that, you know, the listing that you may be looking at is, is probably the HRA report, but that's going to have every person's name on it, including their dependents.
Okay.
I mean.
Okay, I'll show you after the meeting.
Did you want to read those off?
Yeah, would you like me to?
Yeah, every employee, thank you, go ahead.
Well, I only got the one page, but, you know, I could read it off.
I think we need to be worried about people's right to privacy and HIPAA violations and federal statutes. So I think we need to start leaving people's names out of this.
And you're probably right about that. But the thing about it is, when it was mentioned about Board of Commissioners, and we're open to discussion, when they were talking about if we're receiving benefits, I was just trying to make sure I understood.
Any other discussion?
I'm recusing myself from the vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The original motion for discuss and/or take action on the new employee health plan? We have a duly first and second. Would there be any other discussion?
I will recuse myself from the vote.
I do need clarification, though, why does it, why should he have to recuse himself if Tony doesn't? Shouldn't they both have to, if that's the ethical?
I'm not going to, because I don't have to.
The, the, the ethics.
And then once again, I'll say, it's because it's election year, and you may have forgotten, I'm not running, thank you.
The, the ethics question is, is, they determine whether they're committing an ethics violation or not. The board's position, if they think these violating an ethics, can challenge that. So that, that's not my call.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Can I get a roll call vote on that, Mayor?
Any other discussion?
Mayor, I have a request for roll call vote.
Do you have anything else, Mr. White? Anything, Ms. Doughty? All those in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Busell, votes aye.
Thank you, sorry for the roll call, Mr. Commissioner Busell, aye.
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 Thank you very much, City Manager, thank you, Mr. White. Discussion is up.
Thank you, Mayor. This thing that's going, we're changing in October, as far as the reports from the department heads, we're, hopefully, the last meeting in October, we will have what we call a City Manager's Report, which will include written reports from each division, which will be in your packet for y'all to look over. And rather than have the oral report, we feel that it would be better to have it written. And we're going to include it once a month in the second meeting of the month. And once it's gone through, and we actually can display it on PowerPoint if you'd like, but we're going to immediately, the next day, put it on the website. And that way, the citizens will know what each division's doing, what meetings they're attending, what classes they're taking, kind of giving overall view of where the citizens can know what, what they're paying for. And so, this will be the second meeting in October. There will be no oral reports the first meeting of the month, and they'll all be the second meeting. And Tom has actually given his last oral report tonight, without being in the City Manager's Report. So, just a point of information for that. We think it's very proactive in our vision that we're going forward and letting citizens know everything that's going on at City Hall. So, that, I just wanted to let y'all know. I think Frank's got a few things that he would like to present tonight, too.
Thank you, staff comments, Mr. Hubbard?
Thank you, Mayor, I have just a few brief comments. I wanted to bring it to the board's attention that we did receive sixteen thousand dollars in reimbursement from the Department of Transportation. Also, if you recall, with, there was a question one time about last year's allocation of the STP funds, which was ninety-four thousand dollars. Would it be extended, would we get an extension to the end of the year? I was told by an employee of the Department of Transportation unofficially, yes.
Great.
As far, just a quick, just a, just to mention on, an update on building permits, just, just in September, we've issued permits for six houses. And also, I just wanted to mention, too, that under Grants Review, I've found a site, well, I finally found the MPO site, that has a summary of all of our grants, and it's up to date from the day you. What I'm going to do is send all of you the information on how to access that. And you can see, we'll also have a synopsis of these in the City Manager's Report every month. Anytime you want to look at the status of our grants, because this tells you where the grant, what the source of the funding is, it describes the project, it says what phase we're in, it talks about what the city's amount is, and what the state or federal money is involved, it also mentions any amendments that have been made. So, it's really good information. Anytime you wanna look at the status of our grants, 'cause this tells you where the grant, what the source of the funding is, it describes the project, it says what phase we're in, it talks about what the city's amount is, and what the state or federal money's involved, uh, it also mentions any amendments that have been made, so, it's really good information, and I'm gonna be sure all of you have access to that. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Other staff?
I'm going up here tonight. Uh, we're trying to move forward to be, continue to be transparent, and also to put things in a format that's easily understandable, so I'm gonna go through these fairly quickly, but I'm gonna, at the end, any questions, feel free to ask, but we'll start out with August revenues. As you see, sales tax continues to be our driving revenue, a little over 60 percent, if you add the, um, local sales tax plus the state sales tax. We had $312,288,000 in revenues in August. As far as expenditures, um, of course salaries continue to lead that. Um, we had $413,496,000 in revenues in August. All right, this is a new graph we're putting in. We, uh, Finance Committee has created a, uh, projection line. Uh, if you look at the blue line, that's where we project our revenues to be throughout the year. And hopefully, you can barely see that red line kinda right on top of the blue line, but hopefully, the red line on revenues is gonna be above what we project. If you look in August, it was not, but if you look at year-to-date, we're ahead of the game $26,687,000 to date on what we projected. All right, as far as expenditures, uh, hopefully, that's, again, that's our projection line throughout the year of what we anticipate we will spend. And then, uh, again, for the month of August, we came in over what we expected, but as of year-to-date, we're under what we expected, $52,991. I also like to look at the revenues year-to-date, 'cause they, they do change, um, between month to month, but right now, uh, still sales tax is leading the way. So far, we've brought in $737,920. As far as expenditures, we've spent $824,859. And I like to look at, this is a, an actual, as we go forward, it'll be a line graph, so we can kinda compare and see the cycles of revenues and expenditures, but right now, we just don't have enough data to, it, it just, it's not a pretty graph. So we, uh, but right now, we have spent, um, $86,939 more than what we brought in through August 31st. And these last two graphs are just a comparison of where we are now and where we were last year. As far as revenues to date, we are $205,624 above where we were at August 31st of last year. And as far as expenditures, um, we are $61,959, um, less spending than we did at this time last year. I like, I think, um, it's hard to know where you're going if you don't know where you've been, and it's, um, also, as we get, look at projections of where we wanna be, uh, we will get better at those projections. I really thank the Donna and the Finance Committee to help me crunch numbers, and, um, and hopefully, as we provide the data to the, to the community, people can see that everything goes in cycles. That is my report for tonight. I will sit down and if there are any questions.
I have one, I have one question. This sheet right here, you made a comment at the end of the difference. Can I ask you that number again?
Uh, we've had $86,939 more in expenses than we have in revenues so far fiscal year 15.
Thank you.
Which is expected.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
This is a little bit off from what we were talking about before, just going back to the insurance just a second. What part of the discussion that we had, I may have got thrown off, was considering the 7-1? Did we discuss that at all? Going to change in the renewal dates from November to July the 1st, where we do a regular budget, so we can take into account consideration the true insurance cost, it's time we do a budget rather than have to do amendment in the middle of the year.
Yes, we, I've talked with Tim, and we looked at it this year. Uh, just with the, the HRA was just too, too, I mean, it was too hot, and we felt like, um, we would lose a lot of money, 'cause anytime you have a new renewal, you set your new renewal date, everything goes back to zero. So, you know, you're at, on an individual, you start out at zero to 3,000, you know, whereas, if, once they hit the 3,000, then we, we saw we had potential savings to go ahead and finish out this year on our current, current plan, so, we're gonna start looking, uh, probably mid-February, and, uh, hopefully have, um, at least two or three solid options for the city come June, for our July 1 renewal.
I think that'd be great. Thank you.
Mayor Feig, the stabilization plan, that we were supposed to have first meeting in October, we're gonna need the second meeting in October, because we, we spent a lot of our time involved in insurance over our last two meetings, and really have done some work. Tom has, I didn't say we, Tom has done some work, but we've not had a chance to openly discuss it and formulate it, so.
I believe it was the 16th, which is the second meeting in October.
Then we're in good, we're in good shape then.
And if not, then?
But we, but we, we, it's not that we've forgotten it, we, the insurance was a priority for us, and so that's, that's where we are.
Was it on, it was on the agenda on the 11th, correct?
I don't.
The Finance Committee?
I think so.
It was on the agenda, but we didn't get to it.
Okay, that's fine, and that's why I was just validating when he said it. It was on the agenda, but you didn't get to it. Okay.
The insurance discussion, I think, lasted almost two and a half hours, so.
Thank you.
We'll give it.
Any other comments on the finance? Other staff reports this evening?
I just got two, uh, quick ones. Star Party, September 26th, from 7 till 9, and then, uh, Fall Fun Day is October 4th, Saturday, from 10 to 4.
Thank you very much. Comments, questions? None other? City Attorney comments?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'll keep mine short, uh, in consideration of the late hour. I do apologize to the board for not being able to give you a definitive answer on the question that, uh, Vice Mayor had, but I would never in any way mislead this board, and I suggest to you that there, at this particular time for that question, the only way you can get a definitive answer is, is read, uh, some appellate court decision, and I don't even know of a trial court that's addressed that particular issue. Lots of ethics issues have been, have been addressed, but that specific one about how boards is, are going to, uh, ethically vote on something that's going to affect the whole community in which they live. Like I said, I would not wanna mislead, just the reason I, uh, addressed mine to Vice Mayor as, in my opinion. I have no doubt about the contents of the statute of Section 13, uh, 6 has, Section 6 has to defer to 13, but there's been no definitive decision on that either. One other thing I wanted to mention, uh, the workshop that, uh, the board had relative to the paving of the roads with the state people and some metro, uh, employees. I'm not gonna start trying to call names, 'cause I'd leave somebody out, and I don't mean to, but that was one of the better, uh, workshops that I've attended. I have attended workshops involving the city, and I've attended workshops involving other issues that was not, had nothing to do with Fairview. But what I was so impressed with was that the people that came to the meeting were prepared to discuss the issues that the city needed to find out. There's nothing more disconcerting than go to a workshop and find out that the people that's supposed to be leading you have not prepared for it, and these people were obviously prepared. The board obviously listened to those people, and I compliment you on, on that, uh, because there was a lot of questions, and a lot of questions were answered, and I think, uh, just, again, I'll identify this as my opinion, when they left that meeting, the board knew what they wanted to do and were fully conf, uh, confident in what they were, what the, the right answer should have been. I mean, that's my opinion, but, uh, it was pretty obvious from the questions that was asked by board members that they got the points that, that they needed cleared up, cleared up, and I, I commend you on that, because it shows a, an ability to have an open mind. If everybody comes to those workshops with their mind already made up, you're kinda wasting your time. And, and that was not the case. I observed an awful lot from that, and I think the meeting was excellent and served a, a good purpose, and I, I know that the people that are sitting on the board had, had put a lot of time in it, a lot of work in it, and they were concerned about what was best for the citizens and the city. And, and I, I want to commend you on that for what it's worth, uh, because I've been to a lot of, a lot of workshops, and some of them were very productive, and some, you'd have been better spending your time eating a hamburger somewhere. And I just wanted to pass that along to you. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications from the commissioners. Commissioner Sutton?
Uh, I just wanna thank the chamber for putting on a great, uh, Metro Fest this year. It's, for the time that I've been here, it's the best one we've ever had. They, it's, you're almost running out of parking places in a 700 something acre park. Uh, people hadn't started leaving by the time they were still coming in, and they were still coming in late in the day, uh, to get to that. The city did a great job in assisting with that. They were everywhere out there. I wanna thank Wayne Hall, the city manager, and all of his directors and employees. They did a great job, and they continue to do a great job, and that, as was stated earlier, I haven't seen so much harmony in City Hall in a long, long time. And that goes a long way for production and, uh, keeping good employees, and that's one thing you have to do. To lose an employee is a cost factor any way you go, 'cause you gotta hire somebody else, and you lose everything you've involved in and put into that other employee, so, uh, I want to thank y'all for the job that you're doing. Also, just wanna throw one thing out there. The, the plan that we voted on tonight on the insurance was not a benefit plus for anyone, any of the employees. Their rates are going up, their deductibles are going up, am I correct in saying it that way, are gonna get worse. Uh, so there's nothing positive for anybody that's involved in that. It's a cost savings thing that we had to do for the city, and I think we're gonna be okay with doing it like we did it. Thank everybody for their work. These workshops that y'all are having on the budget, on the insurance, uh, y'all have done a phenomenal job, and thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanna make it clear to everybody and people watching home that they don't understand that some things may have been misrepresented tonight, but I was not on the city insurance plan until my wife was a full-time employee of this city. It was voted on last year. When it was passed, I could've immediately taken the plan, and I chose not to. As my opponent has said, uh, she took to Facebook and was asking questions of the public, and several people in a certain group, uh, had some very disparaging remarks to say, uh, towards me, uh, speaking that I cost the city and the taxpayers a lot of money last year, because I was fortunate enough to be born with a disability, and I had to have two total hip replacements last year. Well, the city didn't pay for a dime of that, not one penny. So I just want to make it known to everyone, everybody, to please listen. I was not on the city insurance plan, and I didn't cost the city any money because I had two surgeries. There's been many people to say that on Facebook, and they are exactly wrong. This is the kinda thing, if you have a question, come to somebody and ask them. Never one time did anybody come up and ask me personally what was going on there. They're just, you're making stuff up on Facebook, saying, oh, yeah, he's costing us a bunch of money. He had a bunch of surgeries last year. So I just wanted to clarify that. I wanna also thank Mr. Tim White. Uh, he has been serving our city well in our partnership with him, as was mentioned tonight. We used to be on the state insurance plan, and the very first year he took over our plan, he saved us a quarter million dollars the very first year. Is that correct, sir? A quarter of a million dollars was saved just because we decided to do business with him and going off the state plan. That needs to be mentioned as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Busell?
Uh, no, ma'am. I'm calling.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to address, I hate to keep harping, um, I was basing what, um, the questions off of what the mayor had asked. Um, she had asked a question about board of commissioners. And I just wanted to clarify, 'cause I did come to the Finance Committee, and we, they gave us a book, and it showed what everybody spent and whose names. That's the only reason I was questioning, not to doubt Mr. Sutton, but I was like, did I miss a line? Did I read it wrong? I was trying to make sure. Now, I love the fact, and I almost kinda giggle at the fact that I'm being referred to as this is election year, because this is the first time I've ever ran for election sitting in this seat. Last time, I was out there with y'all. So I find it kinda humorous. I'm not really sure how I act different, because if anybody's been paying attention, attention to me for four years, you will see that I've asked questions on things I didn't understand. I have asked for clarification. I made sure I understood what I was voting for. So if you see me doing anything different, um, then, you know, please, citizens, let me know, because I think I've done the very same thing for four years, and to loot that just because this is my first election, that I'm doing anything wrong by asking questions. So, to get that out of the way. Now, I don't know what Facebook, but y'all keep alluding to me and, um, things. I don't know what Facebook posts you're talking about. I'm probably not allowed on that page. I probably got removed for telling truths. I don't know what page it was. But, as it goes, you know, it matters what the public thinks of us, and sometimes things get out there that just aren't factual, because anybody can go on these open forums and say anything they want, and, you know, it's happened about me, and then it's happened about my husband, and it's happened about, and unfortunately, it's just the way it is. We took this seat, we didn't ask to get beat up, but it happens. It's just, you know, price for doing business, but overall, we have great employees. I wanna protect the employees, and the insurance question was to know what was fair. And, um, I would like us to use it more often, just to ask the citizens, 'cause I think that's one of the things, the biggest complaints I hear is, you know, the citizens don't always feel like they have a voice, and so, when it's used for good, um, I think it could be a useful tool, and, um, I would like to see us take more things and just see. It was very helpful for me to know what everybody else was paying, and to just hear how their companies were, and, so, anyway, I just, I don't feel like it was a bad thing to ask the citizens what they were paying and, you know, their thoughts, and so, I'm really not gonna stop that. I think I, I really learned, um, and had a lot of insightful, um, information from the city, citizens, and so, I just, like I said, I appreciate y'all coming tonight. I wouldn't want Mr. Sutton to think that that was a personal attack. I just didn't understand what I saw versus here at the Finance Committee and versus what was being. what was being said here. So, I, I do apologize if that seems in any way to you like it was a slight, I'm sure you know how much insurance you're paying, but it wasn't what I was reading on a piece of paper. So, since, um, you were here and I appreciate, um, you taking the time and working hard with our city, um, staff. Um, I did want clarification. Hate to bring you up here, too. So, that being said, um, I hope, um, the citizens, um, can understand the fact that the insurance, we had to do what was fair for the employees, and, um, if we have to make increases and make adjustments, you know, we always want to keep good employees, and it's not fair for them to have to pay for our mistakes. And, um, so I think there's a happy meeting, and I think that we could eventually get to the point where we're offering still a very strong insurance package and we can budget for it. So, I think we're on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have one question. Is the, um, would the minutes to the grant workshop be posted on the website? Yes, ma'am? Yes, sir?
We will post it.
Okay, and I don't have anything else, and the first day of fall is Tuesday, so happy fall, y'all. I ask for a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. Thank you for your attention.